I don't know that we necessarily need to do full introductions and it looks like folks are still kinda filtering in, but I know. Geez, almost everybody on this call is probably a town meeting member, right? But raise your hand if you're a town meeting member or have been a town meeting member in the last election.
Or have been.
Right.
Our work or have been.
Or have been.
Have been.
And if you drop off, you can say why.
Two and a half, two and a half.
Alright, hey Brynlee, are you raising your hand to say something or just showing that you're a town meeting member?
Oh, no, no, you told us to raise your hand.
She followed the directions.
Someone actually paid attention.
Hi Paul.
Alright, well.
Good morning.
Without more ado, uh yeah Frank, let's uh turn it over to you, um. I guess you either you or Martin can show, uh share whatever materials you wanna share, but thank you again for for taking the time to spend with us this morning.
Before we start sharing anything, why don't I, I just step back and explain why town meetings this year is a little different.
Yeah, that would be great.
Um, start with that and then then we can move forward from there. First and foremost, we have two town meetings. We have one that is the special or the spring annual town meeting where we do the budget.
Yeah.
And we do, we do other things like we're gonna do zoning, some zoning work and whatnot. The normal town meeting and then we have the carryover from last fall in the special town meeting. Number one, which is the proposed charter changes where we we have at town meeting week. It's 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 a week, um referred to the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee. They've brought that back. Um, and thankfully, uh, the select board and a number of the the folks that were concerned uh spoke up. Uh, and have attended the CBRZ meetings and they've made some changes even from what was proposed last fall. So, um, that we have these two town meetings. Now the trick that the trick. The procedural um process that we're, it's a trick that we're gonna throw. Is that we're gonna open both town meetings at one time, the one concurrent. So that you know how I read the rules and do all that stuff in the beginning? I don't wanna do that twice.
No, I don't blame you.
So I'm gonna do that while both town meetings are are running. And then we'll adjourn the special town meeting and then move right into what's on the spring town meeting. Um, and and that's the budget. Thank you.
Ooh, okay.
So.
What day is what?
Okay, that that's the next step. That's going to occur Thursday, the twenty fifth.
This is this week coming up, right?
This week.
Yeah.
What's going to happen on the twenty third? Is because it's the second night of Passover. Um, and we want to respect all religions, all holidays as we have in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we're not going to conduct any business.
Okay.
And you say, we won't go into any warrant articles or any motions. What I hope to do is go to the Natick High School auditorium with the town clerk. And maybe five or ten of the town meeting members. And open up town meeting and then immediately declare that there is no forum. And because there's no forum, we can't hold down meeting.
Right, right, right.
Can't take any action.
That's the trick.
So this is the trick. So then we're gonna, we'll we'll close both town meetings and adjourn them until Thursday night. On the twenty third.
But don't show up on Tuesday, no time, not, yeah, in other words.
I'm not supposed to say don't feel up, you can't. But it's advised that, I say it differently. It's advised that only five or ten people.
Oh, okay, well, this is being recorded, so.
I know, that's what I'm being.
So Frank, when you adjourned both of them on Thursday and then you said you'll take up spring town meeting, so the special town meeting gets deferred till the end? Is that, is that correct?
That, that, well, that's not quite, I'm not done with my little trickery here.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad you asked the question, Doug. Um, so yes, everything now has been shifted to Thursday night. That will be the first order. Uh, those will be the first order of business and we'll start with the spring town meeting. The special town meeting will remain adjourned until the following Tuesday night. Now, the reason, on the thirtieth. Now, the reason why we're doing that, and it's it's gonna get a little choppy here, I know it's it's gonna confuse some people. The special council for the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee is only available, available on the thirtieth and the second of May, which is the second week of town meeting. So to respect that as we have with other um sponsors. Uh, I'm suggesting if town meeting doesn't wanna do this, this is totally up to town meeting. Um, we'll start with the budget on Tuesday night, then we'll adjourn that. And we'll, we will not call it back into order the following Tuesday night and we'll do the the charter questions on Tuesday night. So this, you know, we'll do one night of the spring, we'll adjourn that and then we'll be do two nights of the special. I'm assuming it's gonna take, it's gonna take a couple nights.
This is kinda like whether, when you have peas and and potatoes for dinner, do you eat one pea and one bite of potato? All the potatoes and then all the peas.
Exactly.
That is, after that, use that with town meeting.
I might just use that one.
Alright.
So that, that's the, the, the quirk, quirkiness is gonna, gonna happening uh this town meeting. I'll try to go slow. I'll try and be patient, but no, if any, if anybody has a question, especially as to say, what are we doing? Um, they, they should stand up and just ask. Um, there shouldn't be any, you shouldn't be inhibited at all uh to ask at any time. Um, you know, what, what are we working on? But that's the plan. So then also, you, you know that I send out my emails? And I send links out to whatever I think.
To the town meeting members?
To town meeting members.
I'll just leave it. I can see, I can see it here.
Okay, well, yeah, good. Um, so I sent emails out to everybody and tried doing uh, a couple nights in advance. Um, I sent one out yesterday, which actually was for Thursday. Which should give you the links of the things that you should study um for Thursday night. And uh, it's essentially the procedural motions that I just went through, that I just talked to. Uh, and uh, starting with the budget and that, that article three is which is the budget. Um, is, is the one that's really could, could take a lot of time and could take a little time.
Okay. Those are gonna be in emails, this is all gonna be in the email.
This is all in the email, so you'll, you'll see that. Doug or whoever is doing the uh um screenshot, could you put up the finance committee? Website?
Yeah, I can do it.
Are you gonna do that part? Okay.
I had it somewhere.
Yeah, there it is, Town Meeting Resources.
You got it, okay.
Yeah.
And I'll also put the link to it uh in the chat.
Is the link in there? Okay, that's great. I was just getting after it, if you could get that.
Oh, that's the one, huh?
This is what I use electronically when I'm at the podium. Because I know two things. This has most, most if not all of the information that you folks need um to go through the articles. It also um is a great repository so that if something changes, um, both um now it used to be Linda, but now Todd and I um can pop, Todd can pop the information up on this website in a heartbeat and I replicate whatever's here in my email. So no matter what, you're gonna get it one way or another, either from this website or from the email. So I, I would capture that link um that's in the chat.
Yeah.
That Martin put out there.
Oh, that link there?
I haven't put it in the, I somehow I can't, I don't have access to the chat right now.
Oh, okay.
Maybe John, can you put that link in the chat?
Yeah, um.
And uh, this is a great site.
Yeah, or Brynlee can, she's awesome at putting things in the chat.
Yeah, I'll get it in there.
Um, speaking of emails, Frank, uh just before you continue a little bit longer. I am, um, I, your emails go to the town meeting members. Do you have any concerns if I were to forward those emails to Coffee with a Purpose members?
Forward it to anyone you want.
Yeah, I mean, cause it, as you point out, it, it's a nice recap of exactly what the plan is for that next uh session.
Absolutely. Feel free to, to, to share anything, um, any of those emails with, with whoever you wish. Um, I'm, I put them out there for general information. And uh, not only for town meeting, but I also try and post them. I'm not always the best at it. But I try and post them on Facebook, uh, on the town meeting um thread. I sometimes, what I'm not always diligent as is getting it out onto the other threads that are out there. So if you wanna share these things that, that are posted out there, please do. Um, the more venues we can get this out on, the better. It's also on the towns websites too. Which is uh, um, natickma.gov. Okay. Um. Okay, so can you click the second red link down? The, this is the recommendation book. This is actually the hard copy book that you got.
And you need to see the hard copy.
I ain't got one.
Yes, okay.
Alright. I hear you.
Is it on, it's online, it's online? Is it online?
It's online, yeah.
I guess, I thought, of course.
This is, this is probably uh the, the best tool that I, in my opinion, um, that a town meeting member um can use and please bring your books to, to uh town meeting. And the reason why we still print this, even though we can do all these things electronically, is that um we need hard copy. Because what we vote is what's printed in the book.
Hmm.
Um, that way, it, there, there, there's a fault, there's a seal, a fail safe to always fall back to a written copy of whatever is voted at town meeting. Um, cause anything can happen to electronic files.
Exactly.
I'm really picky about that.
Oh, well.
I have been, I was professionally and I, I, I am doing this in my volunteer status. So um, I, we had a whole, we ruined a whole night of town meeting. Because I, I don't like, I don't like doing things on the fly electronically, um, cause we, things get lost and the clerk and I one time had to reconstruct by listening to town meeting over and over again, the recording. Because we lost the electronic file.
Oh, my God.
Some reason somebody didn't save it.
So you're never gonna come to that again, right?
Somebody was, but we all make mistakes.
So bring your books.
So bring your books, that's key. So if we could just uh, tab down to page eleven, the first ten pages are really uh messages from uh town administrator, the finance committee, uh, I think the select board has a memo in there. Um, and the planning board has their recommendations. Please read those, please look at those, uh, because they do weigh in um to uh, you know, the work that is done, the preliminary work that, that gets us the town meeting. Um, and if you wanna hear about the work that goes into the, to end the town meeting, um, go to uh, you can go on the finance committee website and, and listen to the orientation. I know Brynlee was there. Um, and we tried to give a sense of how, how we get to town meeting. And this is what we're talking about now is, okay, we're now sitting in the chairs and here's what we're going to do. So if you get to page eleven, which is, I think a little further.
Oh, this is uh.
Further down, that's still, yeah, the numbers are a little.
Yeah, the PDF was page eleven, but not.
PDF is different from the page initiation. There you go, right there. What we've done for a number of years is now we've had a consent agenda, which is uh motions or articles that we place in one motion, which are normally no action or there are things that we regularly have done year after year, or in one case, the peg access funding. You have to do it. You have no choice. Uh, and the amount of money is set, you can't change that, you can't alter that, you can't, can't amend it. So I put the, the peg funding in there too. So uh, articles one, two, six, seven, nine, eleven, fourteen. And you went too fast, but I think it was uh. So you'll see, you'll see the first line of the motion.
And then we got seven, nine.
Yeah.
Some of these are.
Eleven.
Take some space.
Fourteen, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-one. All those articles are, are in this motion. And it's actually pulling all these things to the head of the town meeting. So it's up or down, we voted up or down, but the, I've already heard that there's a late taker on someone giving a report to town meeting. Henry Hogan wants to give a report on the Sawon House. So he may, he may very well try it. He, he hopes to get seven people, cause I put the, the committee article in here. He hopes to get seven people to stand up and we, we will take article, I think it's two, um, out of um this list. Yes, the committee articles, article two. We'll, we'll take that out of the list and um, then it'll go back in, into the regular order of business. So instead of eleven motions, there, there may be ten motions in here, but it all depends on whether he's.
Yeah, ready, ready to do it?
Whether he pulls it up or not. Uh, you know, some people, some people go plan things and then say, ah, I'll forget about it.
Forget about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and that's okay. Uh, that's what town meeting's all about. So we're gonna do this first. So also remember, as you're studying for town meeting, if we pass this, you don't have to study these ten or eleven articles. You don't have to look at them. You can, you can look right by them and not need to understand them. I think the, the explanations are pretty clear. Um, uh, because these are things that we've done uh time and time again. So I don't, I don't feel the need that I have to explain them unless someone has a question upon them. I will.
I would just say as a sidebar, Frank, this consent agenda idea works so well that our church leadership council has recently adopted it for.
That's great.
It speeds our meetings up.
All, all the credit goes to Patrick Hayes, the former chair of the finance committee. Cause he hounded me for years and said, why don't we use that? Why don't we use that? That's a great procedural tool. And I said, yeah, but I don't know if town meeting members will accept it. And then we, we tried it. Uh, I think the first time we brought it up was during the pandemic.
Was, I remember.
Um, and it worked so well at that point that uh, it's a great tool for things that you, you don't have to go article by article and go, and, and vote eleven times. And save yourself the time and the effort and the explanation and all, all that work. Um, so that's what the consent agendas are all for. We'll talk to you soon, Derek.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, take care. Thank you for the coffee. Will do. So if this passes, our first order of business will actually be article three. So if you can go down to, it's gonna.
Yeah, sometimes my scroll bars not working, so I'm scrolling manually here. That's one, that's, we don't want that.
It's that, there it is. Article three is our budget article. Everybody knows what this is. It's, it's all of our operating budgets um in, in one envelope. And this year, there's something a little different. Now you see, there's always, there has to be something different. Keep everybody on their toes, keep me on my toes. If you uh look at this, you'll see that every article or every um department, including the libraries, is part of this article. It used to be that we did the art, the libraries separate because they're trusts.
Yeah.
Um, but now we've got a determination from the Department of Revenue, which is different from the determination we got years ago. So we don't have to do the trust separately. We can do them um as, you know, fold them into uh one article, so long as it listed separately in the article as I, as you see them here. And so that the motion, the actual motion does list this separately, which it does. Um, so what we did, we, we kept, we put this all together so that we can have one motion or two motions rather than twenty some odd motions under the budget. Because we, we're back through the history and you know, rarely was there an, an opposition of especially the library budgets or, or some of the budgets that were, we always passed. Um, rarely were the votes anything but a hundred and twenty to three. Um, it was normally passed um by numbers numerically, the number of votes, um, with over overwhelmingly passed. So we've now moved to two motions under this article. There's a motion A and motion B. And motion A is every budget, but the golf course and the sewer and water enterprise funds. For some reason, the Department of Revenue wants the, those two separate. Um, that's, you know, we do what they say, cause we operate under, under their rules. So motion A will be the first thing the finance committee recommends and the two members at town meeting will, will put on the floor. Um, if you um scroll down, these look exactly what they used to. They look, they're the same, but they're all now combined into one motion. So that means every department is up for debate at that time. Now, town meeting needs to decide how they're gonna debate this. Do you wanna start from top and go to the bottom? Um, or do you wanna just pick and choose and debate only those things that are most important to you? Uh, that's your call, quite frankly. Uh, we have in the past gone from, you know, motion A to motion, was it I two, or whatever the last one was. Um, and but in this instance, they're all in this one, this one uh, uh, motion now. So this might take a little time to get used to, but um, you'll see that everything is now in one place, under one motion. And don't go too fast now, you stop there. The total of what that motion is, is a hundred and ninety million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
Which you memorized.
No, I just. I'm glad you didn't go too far. And this is a summary of that motion. Um, so you can see uh the expenses by department and you, you can also see um, the uh, uh, the actual.
Can you go back up a little bit? Yeah, there you go, the department budgets, great.
Actually, that's a good summary.
So that's a, that's a great summary. So that gives you all the subdivisions of, of the way we, we in, in a uh the, the first breakdown of the subdivisions of our budget. Um, then that's, we used to be even further so, you know, broken apart, um, and we voted those things separately, but to make that number I, uh, add two votes. Um, so that's what will, you will be faced with first. I don't know how long this is gonna take. To me, I, I went through the budget book. I also went through um the town administrator's book, which is on the website, uh, the, the actual budget itself, which you should have, you got that? Let me, let me hold it up. You shouldn't receive this book or this book is on that finance committee website. It is the town administrator's amended budget.
Starting at page eighteen.
And this is filled with a huge amount of information and quite frankly, do not read this late at night. Uh, because you will fall asleep. The only reason I, I like the book as much as I do is that I used this for, you know, twelve years when I was on the finance committee. So I kinda know where what, what section to look for, what, what tidbits to, to go for, um, to get the information I want.
So, yeah, sure, go ahead. Where can we get those books, hard copy if we want?
Oh, excellent question. If you go to the clerk's office, she has a few. They have more up in the uh select board office. So if they run out of one place, they, it should be upstairs.
Both.
Both places have these books.
Have both, right, they have both books.
And they uh sometimes give them out if there is copies available at the beginning of town meeting.
And, yeah, the reason why they're at the select board office is that those are the ones that usually go to town meeting that are on the table. So if you, if you, if you come to town meeting and, oh boy, I forgot my book. I've done that too. Um, you can go out to the table and grab a, grab a spare book.
Thank you.
And I think maybe the town report too.
For those people who want paperless copies, again, this is what.
Yeah.
Was talking about, that's the link from the uh.
Right, that third link down is, is the town administrator's revised budget book. Excellent, excellent uh tool to have. The next one down, the native public schools is a good tool to have too. If you wanna ask or, or you're thinking about, well, let's dig deeper into what that sixty or eighty million dollar amount is that's being asked um in uh which is the first budget under motion A of article three. Um, that will, if you wanna look at the transportation, or if you wanna look at um salaries per um uh school unit uh per grade, if you wanna look at the, you know, some of the um enrollments and things like that, how, how that shifts and changes. Uh, all that information is part of the um native public schools. We are gonna have um four presentations, actually three. Uh, we'll have the usual state of the town from the town administrator. Uh, we'll have uh one deputy town administrator who is going to be available um to help us um uh understand the different sub-budgets. Uh, we're going to have a presentation from the new, well, the interim superintendent of schools. Um, Superintendent Long, and we'll have a uh a presentation from Superintendent Evans, who is from Keith Tech. Kinda, I think that's what we normally do anyway as a practice. Uh, but they are scheduled to be in and they, that'll be heard before we dig into the, the weeds and the, and the get into the uh, uh, questions about article one. So do you have any questions on article one? I can't get into the substance, I shouldn't get into the substance of it, now because that's that's more, you look at the finance committee book and get the information.
Frank, the presentations you just mentioned then are likely to be Thursday?
Yep. Yes, so they'll be Thursday night. Don't come Tuesday night for those presentations. Yeah, so they actually, this will be the, the truly the first article that we take up on Thursday night. Article three. Um, so once we vote that, we'll move on to the next article. Um, which I think is article four. I was going to put this article into, uh, yeah, it's way down there. You should find it.
Somehow I'm scrolling.
There you go. I, I I was going to put this into the uh consent agenda, but since it, it was something different and it needs. I was going to put this into the uh consent agenda, but since it, it was something different and it needs, it really needs. Explanation where there could be questions, I didn't put it in. This basically is, is taking any other authorization or debt that we've, that is unused. And it is liquidating that and taking it off the books. And I think there's two or three of them down below. This is, this is really a good thing because the, the auditors look at this. And are the people that do the uh uh ratings um look at this and say, well, how much do you have on your books for? That of debt that you're not using. Um because that, that actually takes up your capability to, to actually appropriate. And uh this, this is something that Bob Palmer way back as a, as a finance director. Started and should probably one of the best things we ever did um to make certain that. Uh what we don't use or if we've got money sitting in an account somewhere. Um or at least a capability to borrow, um why do that? Why have it just sit there and languish and not, and go unused? So that's what this, this basically does. Article Five is one of my favorites. You see, there's two recommendations here. Uh I think there's three here. This is unpaid bills. We normally don't do anything here. It's the one thing that we vote at town meeting, which is not. A majority vote or two-thirds vote, it's a four-fifths vote. Cause you're, just think of this, this is bills that are coming from previous fiscal years. That are coming into the town and we now have to kind of appropriate money. From the current reserves or available, available funds to pay for something that happened in past years. And that's what this is, this, these, these um. I think the, these are all related to the ambulance service. I think is what it is. Ambulance bills that came in late in the fifth. Or after, came in after July, this past July.
Right, can I uh ask just a procedural question? So when a four-fifths vote or even a two-thirds or whatever. I- is that a calculation of the number of people that vote on that particular article?
Yes.
So when the tally is shown seventy-three to twenty-two or whatever, that's, yeah.
The vote of members present, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. It's not, it's not like the Finance Committee that you have to reach a, a minimum standard. Um here, it could be who, you, you could have ninety-one people there. And it's gonna be four fifths or more uh of uh those ninety-one people. Or two-thirds or, or fifty percent, or you could have all a hundred and eighty people there, which has never happened, but I'm, I know. We're lucky to get a hundred and thirty people. Actually, you're gonna hear all about that, I think. Um about the size of town meeting. Or at least it, yeah, somebody wants to broach the, Josh, Josh Rossraff sent me a memo. And he wants to broach the subject for town meeting. So, but that's under the special, we're, we're still under the.
Okay.
So four fifths vote uh for Article Five. When we go on to Article Six. I think Article, Article Six is in the uh consent agenda. So we don't need to deal with that. Article Seven, we don't need to deal with that. That will be passed. Um Article Eight is our collective bargaining. Um at the time of printing this document. There are um two bargaining units. Um that have ratified their agreement as well as uh the Select Board voting their, the agreements. So you'll be voting, uh you'll have two votes here, motion A and motion B. I don't remember who the bargaining units are. Um one is Public Works, excuse me. And the other one is super, they're both Public Works, laborers and supervisors of Public Works. I got an email from uh one of the deputy town administrators this morning saying, oh, we have a third. So they're sending me amount of, a um. Um. Uh a motion and they'll have to put it on the table and print it out and give one to everybody at town meeting. Cause I, I, I can get a copy to you, but it, for it to be passed and not read. It needs to be in, in writing um in, in a publication of the Finance Committee. So they'll wrap it up and get, put it on the table and. So you may only see an emotion A in a motion B. But it uh is highly likely this, unless something happens, there'll be a, I've got the inside scoop on this one. Uh there'll be a motion C under this, so. Those of you that are following along with your books, you can take note of that. Um but I'm sure you'll, you'll get the documentation on it one way or the other. Um motion, let's see, Article Nine, is it part of it?
That's on the consent agenda, I think.
That was on the consent, so we, we would then jump to Article Ten. And these are our stabilization funds. Uh does everybody know what they're used for? Kind of like our rainy day funds are, are saving, these are basically our savings. Uh we're, our savings books uh or our, um you know, whatever you wanna call it, uh money funds. They uh, we have three stabilization funds and then we have two. We have the OPEV and then we have a, a trust fund that usually is done under this article. Again, keeping in the theme of combining things, we used to have separate articles for each stabilization fund. We've combined those five into this one. And by doing that, uh we can have one single motion, which you'll see under this article. For the monies that are gonna be moved. And I think one is to the capital stabilization and the other one is OPEV. Which is other post-employment benefits that are given to our retirees. And uh huh, watch for the number. Somebody usually asks, but watch for the number of what the uh obligation is on the OPEV. The calculated obligation, it's like a hundred and seventy million dollars. But that's, you know, taking it out to the, the actuaries, uh take it out to the end. Run it out to the end and, and the obligation is huge. But and that's the need why we need to put money in this every year.
So are, are these funds um uh real dollars in a bank account somewhere or?
Real dollars on banking.
How are they invested?
Yeah.
Are they invested and, and do you know how or?
I know how, but the best thing to do is ask the Town Administrator. Or actually, the Deputy Town Administrator for Finance can tell you how they are currently invested. We, we used to buy, when I was on the thick on the, we used to buy CDs. Short-term CDs. Um I don't know if that's how they do it now. And I don't wanna say it is and it not be.
So one of the reasons I'm asking is that the um Community Preservation Committee. Is getting funds. There are already some in the pot somewhere. I don't see them here. I assume that'll be a separate. Issue.
It will.
Um and they also need to be invested.
That's right.
I don't know how that's done. I wanna know.
You know, that's, that's an excellent question and, and. I, I remember that there were limitations. I used to read this stuff when I was on the thick on. There were limitations on how money could be saved and invested. For re- revolving funds, for stabilization funds. Um for, I'm sure the CPA fund might be a little, little different, cause money comes out uh quicker. So you can't have something that's long-term, you have to, that's in the short term. Um and I know the revolving funds. You could only do like a ninety-day CD or real, real short period, cause it comes out, it's always coming out of it. Uh those, those uh reserve funds. So you know, that's something that you'd have to check and see. I, I'll bet the rules are different for each one. Um knowing our Department of Revenue.
Account compared to like some older towns.
We're ahead of other people. Yeah, you know who's way ahead is Wellesley. Arnold Wakeland, who was a friend of my dad's, um was the general manager over in uh in Wellesley. And he perfected a uh, a retirement fund way, way back, thirty, forty years ago. Way ahead of everyone, who's innovative and he included the post. Um uh employment benefits in that and their fund, I think, is probably the best in the state. Um they also have more money than us. But I'm only kidding.
I, I put a link for um town finances in the chat with um John Townsend's email.
Oh, excellent. Thanks, Brenly. Also, another thing, this book. That we talked about earlier, yeah, you can see it, right? The Town Administration's administrative budget, it will tell you what the balances are. There is, there is a schedule in here, I saw it. Um I don't know exactly what page it's on. But that information is in here. If you really search for it, I'll bet you can find it. Um and it's, the town really does give us a, a lot. Um to, to answer these types of questions, what the actual balances are. So this is uh Article Ten?
Yeah.
Eleven was in the um, the school bus transportation was in the um uh consent agenda. So pass on that. Uh capital, it's a big one. There is a plethora of capital requests. Um John Marshall uh has did an excellent job putting together. Um I think an understandable explanation in your Finance Committee recommendation books. Along with photos, um so you can see, you know, envision what it looks like. And you can give an example of it here um in summary form and then he attached values to it and whatnot. Um I, I really, if you have a question about any particular equipment. Or if you have anything about an, an improvement, um ask the department heads or ask John Marshall. Um he, John is, oh, and or, and or Jamie Erickson, wherever, wherever your comfort level is. John really is a guru with, with capital. Um and he does, John Marshall does a great job of that.
Is this the first time they've included photos? Those, those are great.
Um. I don't think they've had color photos in it before. I know that we used to put, we did put photos in when we got, um when we bought that fire truck, the, the Quint. I remember that being.
They may have been in the PowerPoint presentations, but maybe not in the FinCom book before.
Very good, yeah. Yes, yeah. No, this, this really gives you a visual and, and gives you an idea of, of the vehicle. Um one thing that these, our folks do really, really well at the Department of Public Works. And I, I praise them highly for it. They may be retiring vehicles with these new purchases. But they then put them on those vehicles on the market, sell them. Use that money into, put into a fund, which then allows them to buy other vehicles in one of those revolving funds. And that program has saved us tremendous amount of money in interest. Um and uh, you know, needing to use like free cash to buy things. Because here's this, this, you know, money that we're getting from the trade-ins and, and the sales at auction. Um that do very, very well. And that, that, these, our, our folks have their act together, they really do. They do a great job and have for some time. But um they're doing well. So let's go on to. Without getting into the weeds on the capital stuff, a lot, there, there is a lot, yeah, there's. And the capital motions, just so that you know, they're broken up by the, the funding source. Uh the different types of borrowing um and resources um. We're gonna, it's, it's like being on my boat right now. Um it, those motions are broken up for that purpose. Here's my favorite article. I did not put this in the, the consent agenda, but, but for good reason, not because I'm teasing Martin about it. But be, because there, there are some changes in the, in the terms, in the categories. And there, there is some, some shifting of uh representation of, of the. The job classifications and titles to where the at jobs actually are. Rather than having a plethora of, of jobs listed. It, it, you know, we're, they do a very good job of, of keeping track of this at the Personnel Board. Um but uh, you know, it's better to have this as clean and, clean and as updated as possible. So that is the beginning of the motion.
It seems to be the part-time, I don't know where the.
Yeah, then you can see, see the changes in the values. Which is really the, I think. They can explain it better than I, but I think the biggest change is, is what you see on the right-hand side of this. The screen, and that's the uh, the ceilings have changed. The, the, the caps changed greatly. And I'm sure they'd be happy to explain why they've done it. They always. They, they research it fairly well every year. Um because there was that money change, I think it's important to, I thought it important not to put it in the. Consent agenda this year. Um. And it's all because of Martin. Cause he stands up and pulls it out.
Now, my, my issue was the titles keep changing and I was uh. I, I sort of thought we were approving all these title changes and I wanted to know why. Turns out we weren't approving them, that the Town Administrator. Can, has the authority to write titles to people, but, but this was being reported to us uh and, and. And I, I was confused, but.
Well, town meeting is the only body that can actually codify a bylaw.
Yeah.
And these go right into our bylaws, the town bylaws that it's. So um that's why it comes, that's one of the reasons why it come. And any employment agreement or, or, or um schedule has to also come by town meeting too. They have to ratify, it's basically a ratification. But you're right, town, town manager and the personnel board have the authority to do this without, without town meeting. Um. So that's uh that article. And. I can't remember what follows this.
Looks like the date mass.
Should be right here. Uh this one actually has been passed. Uh they opted not to deal, this is on the consent agenda. Um they, they were talking about changing the dates of town meeting. Um as soon as I saw this article, I was on the phone. Yeah, don't you dare. Uh no, I didn't, I did, I, I had a conversation with them and others did too. But it needs to be thought through. Uh because it, it's like when you shift that box of when town meeting is. You also alter the review time by the FinCom, the prep time by departments, by. The time that the town meeting has to get it done, whereas further out, you, June thirty is the last day. That you can do a bu- a budget under the statute, the state statute. The more, the more you move that box out, the smaller it gets. Because you need to do, do all that work uh before that drop dead date. And then there are some, there are some milestones with the Department of Revenue that happen before that. So that June thirty really turns into like the first week of June. Um because of the, all the reporting that has to be done ahead of time. Um so you, it, it, it would squeeze town meeting and we have, we have a. Um a tendency to go long in our town meetings. So uh because, because that's the case.
Right, what about the uh, do the town coffers get filled up a little bit by anything like in big?
Right, what about the uh, did the town coffers get filled up a little bit by anything like in the Inflation Reduction Act? Resources and funding and, you know, there was a lot of federal money out there for a while, right?
Well, our coffers didn't, but the state did. On the inflation uh reduction, but we benefit by that. Because by their coffers being increased or flush. We, they were able to give us a full amount of state aid, for an example, or chapter ninety monies for roads. Um, it it, it's kind of like, I hate the, I hate the word trickle down, I'm sort of a Republican here and this. I don't like the word trickle down, but that is how that actually works. The feds pay the state, the state then doles it out. Um, to to the cities and towns.
How about the big, the big thing coming up with the building of the new school at Memorial, right?
Yeah.
That, that would be similar to the previous new schools that we built like the Kennedy and.
That's, that's my understanding.
Kind of rolls in that direction.
And they, yeah, and they just put that request in the select board, that is, they use the select board, school committee and the select board. So that's, that's years old, but it, yeah, it it's gonna start. It'll start growing. If if the state approves it, the mass building um assistance program. Uh, school building assistance, if they they approve that, that first step, that request. Then the town goes back to design, their first design and and pricing and and planning. Um, and I think the last, Kennedy took us a couple of years during that phase.
But this, they paid for about, what, forty percent of that or more?
A little under fifty, yeah, forty or fifty, between forty and fifty. Depends on the design of the school. If, the more frills you put in it, the less they pay.
Right, right.
Yeah, more of a box, um, the more you pay. Yeah, so. Here we are, this is being passed, but but that that was a question.
It's been passed, it's a no action.
It's no action under um the consent agenda. But it's good to explain why uh in that case. This change, oh, um. This is the thousand gallon or more fuel tanks that are underground. That was part of our bylaws. Um, you you, we, some of us that have gray hair might remember when we had a lot of underground tanks.
Yeah, it was.
And we, we we used to have to re-inspect them all.
Residential ones.
Residential and business. And there was a, there was an inspection, if they were a thousand gallons or more, the annual inspection. And that provision now has been codified in state law. So we have that in our bylaw, so why should it be in two different places? So the thought is, why not just do whatever state law tells us to do? And all this is doing is taking our requirement out of our bylaws. And we'll just do whatever state law tells us to do. But we had, we had it in there quite comprehensive, back when they went into Weathersfield and. Remember when we got a million or two million dollars in the state to aid us in in uh.
Those were pretty expensive.
Actually wrote specific regulations for the for, based on what happened in Weathers- Weathersfield.
I think Sarah, yeah.
They're actually specific set in the old D E P regulations because of Weathersfield, so.
When we first put that in our bylaws, um, to remind us to do the inspections. Um, or I think we may have been required to back during that period. This date, this this actually dates dates back to that, I remember very vividly. Um, but yeah, we're right up your alley, Sarah.
Yeah, that's, that's my thing. I will never forget seeing some poor guy in Weathersfield. They had excavated under the slab of his ranch and this poor guy is standing in his doorway. Looking down at this cavern that was basically his retirement savings being hauled away. Truckload by truckload and undermining his house to boot. I will never forget it. It was awful, just terrible.
I was, I was amazed at what had happened over at Lil' Just School. When I saw what what uh some of the leakage that was over there. I was concerned because it was, it was close to the well that was down it, or it could have been traveling towards it. And I was, I was on the FinCom at the time and uh. Uh, they showed, they took us down there and looked at the pit. It was a pit of despair because they just kept digging and digging and digging. There's a little path just past Little Jim.
Yeah.
Or a ro- a road with a gate.
Right.
That goes down to the well.
To wells, yeah, but where were the tanks, they were just.
The tanks were where the playfield is.
Wow.
Yeah, the the tanks are buried, buried, well, where where the tanks were.
Yeah.
Is where the playfield is now. Yeah, it, pretty nasty stuff, very nasty, but. You know, that, that's the way construction was in the, in in the forties and fifties. With those huge tanks, and we had the same problems along Route Nine. With some of the gas stations that were in there and with the sun away. I remember, the the Getty Gas Station, it used to be in its now. I forget the name of it, roadway or something, um, that has a an air, what is it, an aeration plant probably, Sarah?
Yep, yep, back, yeah, they would pump the water, aerate it and capture. The chemicals would come out into the air and then they'd capture that and activated carbons, it's this whole multi-stage thing. They tend to do it a little differently these days because that process is expensive and time consuming. They've come up with some better technology since, but that was the gold standard back in the eighties, the nineties to do it that way.
Still doing it over on Route Nine.
Yeah, well, once the system's in, you know, the big expense is putting it in there and getting it up, so so once you've got it there. It's often more cost effective to keep it running than to to jump ship to a different, a different attempt of dealing with it, so.
It's wild stuff. Ah, interesting business, let him not in it.
I I enjoyed it, but I'm also happy to be retired, so.
I hear you. Okay, next article is. Sixteen, oh, Johnson, we should have some discussion about this. Now. Let let me preface, let me preface that statement. This is only a request to vote to accept the transfer of the property. We are, the town is not voting how we're gonna use the property. The town is not voting about any future changes, sales or transfers or or anything like that. It's only transferring the property from the school committee to the select board. So really, any discussion, I don't, I know this, I I will fail greatly. But any discussion really should be about that only, that concept. Um, I know folks will want to ask, well, what are you gonna do with it once it's, once it's transferred? The same thing happened with these school. Because I was a parent saying, what are you gonna do with my kid's elementary school?
Put together a committee to discuss what like what happens with Johnson.
I don't think they have yet, no. Yeah, they don't, right?
Maybe they'll have the CPA folks.
I I'll also interject at this time to say that. Copy with the purpose here, we have these two meetings about uh town meeting. This one um is for Frank to explain what all the articles are. And then next week will be our uh internal discussion about what we feel about the articles and, you know. Free to lobby for and against and and that kind of thing, so uh, yeah.
Those are the conversations that I stay away from. I'll let you folks do that.
You can listen to the recording and then get a sense of.
Truly, uh, the next article. Good to see you now, yeah, they should take care of the, the. Yeah. Um, oh, this is, this is having to to change the name or status of. One committee, I think it just, if you go down just a little bit.
Adding that zero committee, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's just for the, that, those two committees. Um, taking care of the labeling that is in our bylaws now. Um, so it's a pretty simple uh qua- request. Uh, it will not require two-thirds voted, it actually requires a majority vote. Uh, there's a little error in the book, but not, not critical to what, because our town bylaws, we can change by majority vote. Uh, zoning, you you need a two-thirds vote. But uh, this um. This is something that I think it's already occurred anyway, hasn't it? So we need to make certain that that our bylaws reflect uh what actually is is happening today. And that's the purpose of this article. Could almost be consent agenda, but it it could have been, but.
Yeah.
I bet, yeah, I figured somebody's gonna want to ask a question about, it opens up, yep, the box. Now Pandora's, but the box, because the box is still framed here. Um, and and, you know, folks, good if they wanted to ask some more real questions that.
It ties into the next article, which that that committee has a uh.
Then we get into uh the specialized energy code. I am not gonna even attempt.
Julian, well, she was here, she was on copy.
And and she did give you a presentation, yeah, but I do want to say. That um I got some material from them, which will be going out of the emails. As, and it's probably the same deck and and explanation that you folks heard. Um, but it will be out on my emails and also the the finance committee website. Uh, so you folks could uh could brush up. Uh, and um. Uh, get, get all the information you need about the specialized energy code. I saw their presentation, I think it was before the select board, or maybe it was the FinCom. And I thought it was very nice, it was very good.
Yeah.
And I, and if I can understand it, they're pretty, they're they're doing all right.
I did have a documentation question about this one, Frank. Uh, it's uh, the beginning of the article here, in this little box, it says quantum of votes, uh, ten for, four against. Um, but then when you go through the um, the details and all the discussion, at the very end of that. It seems to indicate that the vote was eleven to four. Are those just two different kinds of votes? Or is that just an inconsistency in the documentation that would have to get?
I have a sneaking suspicion somebody aired.
Oh, I see, yeah.
The finance committee.
Eleven to four at the very end, yeah, I just worry, you were saying at the outset that. Um, printed record has to be the official record, is that the kind of thing that has to get straightened?
Yeah, the finance committee will have to touch that up. Raise it with the, raise it during town meeting.
But I I don't remember.
Yeah. I'll I'll tell Rachel, how about that?
I knew Sarah.
Ask them to.
Or you can ask for them, yes. Um. I, like I say, I I thought they did a great job and and um, they will give a presentation of already. Talk, what was her name, Anne?
Yeah.
Anne Montel.
Yeah.
Tell, yeah, okay, I couldn't remember the last name. Um, and Julian. Will will be at town meeting. To help out with that. I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about this. Um. I haven't heard too much about uproar, but I saw some comments on Facebook from a couple of the builders and I don't. Know if they fully understand it or they were not, they didn't buy into it completely. Because it does create an onus on that, it does, it does put a requirement on on the builders for. For new uh property, uh, not so much renovations as I understand it. But that's about as much as I really understand. So. I won't be building any new homes. Um, the next article, oh, um, just to let you know, I don't think we're gonna get beyond eighteen. The first night. I'd like to get. Close to it. That way we get all the financial voting, financial articles out of the way. So the goal that I set, you'll see in my email, is that I kind of set the that first evening. To make certain that we, we try and get everything financial done um in in that first night. Because, once we get that first night done, we're gonna end up going to the special town meeting. And taking a break from where where we are right now in in discussion of the spring town meeting. We can continue with the spring discussion, but um I just want to make note of that. That my kind of milestone is to, is to try and make it. Either near or to article eighteen in the, in that first evening.
But Frank, does that switch from regular town meeting to special? Have to happen on a, on two different nights? Like, like, is there any option to get to the point you want to get? Um, suspend, adjourn, whatever, special or regular town meeting, and then immediately in that, on that same calendar night? Take up special?
We we could, we could actually, it it, we don't have to do it, but that's how we've done it in the past. That's a practice that we've used, we've adjourned and set aside, or uh, you know. We've actually broken, we've called the two hearings, um, then we adjourn one of the two. And then move on with with that which is left over, then adjourn that and go back. And it, because I can call a town meeting anytime. Moderator can call, call it to the floor. Um, or town meeting by vote can call it to the floor, anytime they wish. Or they can adjourn it anytime they want. I can't adjourn anything.
But you know, it wasn't switching from one to the other that I was asking, it was whether they had to be on different calendar. Sessions of the. Like, a- a- as I understood what you said before, you you're gonna get as far as you can on Thursday with all of this stuff, adjourn. And then the following Tuesday, the next physical session. Is when you would take up special town meeting. If for some reason you were running early, what what a concept, um, or. Could you stop at like nine o'clock at night?
I like your faith and.
Yeah, really, and then, and then take up special town meeting on that same physical night, calendar night? Or or do you, does it have to be a a different night or?
It it could very well happen that way, Doug, that that we get through all fourteen votes under the special town meeting and. And dissolve that, and then then we have an option to go right to spring annual town meeting again. In that same night, if we want to.
Yeah.
Um, or vice versa. It it's better for, let's put it this way, for the sanity of the the town clerk. Um, it it, it's better not to jump around too much. Uh, because it's a little hard to follow when you're going, you know, out of order and sometimes um from one. Town meeting to another.
And we go to town clerk a lot.
Well, she's got her job handful.
Yeah.
Uh, to say the least.
Yeah.
Um, I'm glad she she decided to come back. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Um, let's see, nineteen, very important, uh. Uh, Detective Haswell. Uh, has reached the mandatory age to retire. Uh, this is a question for you folks to approve, to go to the state house. For, so that we would have special legislation, uh, so that um Detective Haswell can continue his work. And mentor uh people to take his position. Um, so that he could work till he's sixty-eight. And I think that's what the plan is with this.
What's mandatory requirement?
Sixty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, for police officers, yeah.
Is that a state requirement, Frank, or?
I'm sorry.
Is that a state requirement?
It's a statute, yeah. But this, this will make a special law for a native. Only for this one. Yeah, yeah, only for Detective Haswell. John's a good guy too. I don't know.
I mean, this takes time to go through the state.
It will, yeah. I don't, I don't know, and that question actually was asked at the finance committee, what happens if town meeting approves this? He then gets to retirement age, can he still work? If the legislature, uh legislator um doesn't um approve it, uh, yeah. I honestly don't know the answer to that one, that's town, town council. It's a great question for her. Um, I think he can, but. The intent is being made by by town meeting, so that he should be able to. The intent is being made by, by town meeting, so that he should be able to. A lot of these fellows do contract work. Even after they retire, so I'm sure there's a way around it for a short period of time. Twenty. Um this is starting to get into the zoning issues. We have a problem, I think everybody, everywhere has a problem with. The laggard time or the time that it takes to go through the permitting process. There is an area in western part of the town um that. Behind um Sherwood Plaza. I think it is, where the old uh NADIC motel is, that's being renovated. Up that, and those are the roads, the Dean Road, the, the Worcester Road, Worcester Street. Um and Strathmore, where it would be nice if we had an expedited permitting process, which is allowed under forty-three D. And that's what this is, would allow us, allow our uh CED department to use. Uh when someone comes in and they wanna put uh really, um they're real hot to move in, a, a business. It's hot to move in and they can use that expedited process. What? That actually um sets aside or, or speeds up, I don't know exactly. And I think that's what we'll probably hear about at town meeting. So that's what this article's for. Some pretty pictures of the areas affected.
Um where use regulation.
Yeah. Articles twenty-one through twenty-six are all zoning. I am not. The zoning expert. But I, I'll, I'll talk about process. There's two things I wanted to mention when we're talking about these art zoning articles. First. Um they must be reviewed by the planning board and a recommendation must be provided. Um to town meeting, which I think is on one of the first. Eight or ten pages of your finance committee recommendation book. Uh you, I recommend that you, while you're doing that, is it page six? Excellent, starting on page six. Um as we're going through articles uh twenty-one through. Uh twenty-six, uh you'll see that they did take specific recommendations on these zoning amendments. Um they also give a very quick, uh short explanation. Uh I used to weigh those very heavily. Um at least trying to understand, you know, because they're the pros of this, they, they deal with this day and a day of. Um there's two issues with the finance committee rule of uh recommendations. Article twenty-one and Article thirty, uh twenty-three, excuse me, have no recommendation. Now, the reason why there's no recommendation from the FinCom is that the way our bylaw. Uh requirements for recommendation, eight of the fifteen members that are seated on the finance committee. Have to act affirmatively or assent uh to a recommendation. If you notice, the quantum of vote, as um Martin has moved the uh. Uh that box up in the table, the, the quantum of vote for the favorable action uh was seven to zero. So therefore, even though it has had a majority vote.
An overwhelming vote.
And a overwhelming majority vote, uh it still does not reach uh the threshold. For the finance committee to give a, or to print or to give their recommendation. And I think it's a good idea that we have that, eight, then, uh don't get me wrong, I'm not stressing that, that it this, that it's a bad thing. Um but this is one of the quirks uh with our recommendations and the timing in which they have to get out. Which was the other key, key problem with Articles twenty-one and twenty-three. And that is, they are so comprehensive. And there's so much happening here, that the finance committee uh really did not have sufficient time. To fully review uh the comprehensive na- nature of Articles twenty-one and twenty-three. Uh the director of the CED and the, the former chair of the planning board, Terry Evans. Took that seriously, and they put up five different videos. And they are attached to the finance committee website. I also am sending the links out in my, in my emails. I strongly urge that you take the time um to watch those. Uh videos. And um. Yeah, there it is. If you go, if you actually go down.
Oh, yeah, there.
There's your videos right there. There's three under Article twenty-one and two under Article twenty-three. Um each of those explains one of the motions under the article. Uh and I, I think she does a great job explaining. What their intention was under those, those motions. Again, there is red line in the book, um don't read it late at night, uh cause you, it'll put you right to sleep. Uh but it's, it's very hard to track. From the old zoning to what is being proposed. And some of what's being proposed, and I couldn't put my finger on it, and I got a little frustrated. Some of what they're proposing is being changed because of, let's say precedent that they've set. The planning board, they, they being the planning board, and that uh court cases has changed. Um have changed, I should say, flow, uh changed. That they needed to do a catch-up and make, make substantive changes, uh so. It, it, it's endless. I used to have a personal rule, and I'll share this with you. That when something came to me at the finance committee, and I didn't understand it or couldn't. Understand it in a reasonable amount of time, um I would not recommend it going forward. Cause if I can't recommend it, I had this problem with the wetland protection bylaw. It, it was all good. There was absolutely nothing wrong with it. But it was, it's so comprehensive and so large, I couldn't understand the whole thing in one sitting. Uh after an hour or two. And if I couldn't, having been, you know, looking at this stuff and not being an ex- expert, but a layperson. Um looking at it and can't understand it, how can town meeting understand it? With the short um period of time that they have to understand. So take all that as you wish, as you will. Um that was also noted by s- uh uh the minority vote. Um voters, and even some of the people that voted for the uh, the seven to zero. Um vote, uh that there was, it was not ample time to make the review, or do a comprehensive review. Beyond that. Watch the videos.
Is that the first time videos like that have been used to kind of supplement an explanation? It seems like a great idea.
And I'm aware of, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although I, I would also like to give a shout out to the, to the. Um sessions that you hold, Frank, where you invite uh individual sponsors of, of Articles to come on. And give a, you know, a short presentation to you, or just in conversation mode about what it really means. But I think those are also very helpful to get a quick understanding of them.
Yeah, that, that town meeting primer show that I do is just meant so that.
That's, that's very.
Without getting it, that's also, that's, they, they put a link on there too. That is not in the, as much in the weeds as, as um these videos that are under. Uh the zoning articles in, in-depth reviews. But what I try and do is, like you say, in conversation. Um and I call it lay terms, you know. You're at the coffee shop and you're talking about something, um and you're just trying to do what we do here, what you're doing here. Um and uh do it in, with, with the, the expert, the person that knows a lot more than I do. Uh and uh all these tools are very helpful. Well, I see they got the orientation meeting up there too. Great, excellent. Uh the next article. Okay, so if you don't mind, we'll breeze right through the zoning stuff. You can take the time and, and look at the, the, the nitty-gritty and the, and the details. Some of them are pretty straightforward. Off-street parking, I think what they're doing there is pretty straightforward, so I think you can pick up on it. But the next one, I think, is twenty-three ago. This is changing the uh. This is one of the ones that came in late, that had some huge changes to it. Um and this, this also, twenty-three had changes to the um. Permit, it's a, a special permit and the site plan review, so that it not only affected the planning board. It also affects the, the uh Board of Appeals, so ZPA is what, what we call it. In acronyms. And there's some. Definition changes that, that are, to me, it's, they're, they're met, huge changes. Cause what the planning board has done is they've consolidated the definitions that were in sections. Of the, of the zoning and put them all on one section, but. That's for you folks to review. Uh but if you go down to um. Look into the Wetlands Protection Act. Change, which might be twenty-six.
Yeah, I think.
See the twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Twenty-six certainly is wetlands protection, page one sixty-four.
We've got a few pages to go.
Wow. See that planning board burns up paper.
Nice colored pictures, whatever.
Yeah, they're getting better when graphs and, yeah, maps and.
The color is nice, cause even if you don't see it in the printed version, you see it in the electronic version.
Yep.
Yep.
Ms Rundell um uh did a good job explaining this, and there's only one section that's being changed. And I, this, the takeaway that I got is, if you take a tree out. Within certain bands or, or areas within the Wetland Protection Act. You're required to replace that, that tree with either one tree or two trees or, or ratio of trees. Depending upon where it comes out. And the text is actually highlighted, if you go down, Martin. Uh it was redlined. In the, the example. There you go. So they put the whole Wetland Protection Act in there. But what they, this is the substance of what is being changed. So please, I beg the town meeting members and the public. The only thing we're gonna discuss is, is, is the tree replacement section. Cause that's the only change. We're not gonna discuss the entire Wetland Protection Act. Um it's, it's huge, isn't it? It's big. Um I remember when we implemented this. It was, it was huge. Yeah, that's right. Martin, you were part of that too.
First year I was on town meeting, actually.
Was it your first year?
It was actually just a few months before open space was even created.
Yeah, exactly. It is, it, it was the beginning of, of, of our regulation of, of the wetlands. And open space and some of open spaces, so um. You know, th- this sets up a certain ra- ratio while it's in the buffer zone, in a certain ratio. Um while it's in the no build zone. Uh I think that's simplicity of, of what really is being requested here. Uh smart role, uh makes sense. Uh I'm, I'm sure Claire Rundell will, will explain it extremely well, or much better than I can. Uh with, with, with more details and examples, but um she had a. I think she had a four-page overhead. That uh presentation, that, that was pretty clear as to where, where this would apply. So beyond this. I think we have. One other article. Yeah, this, this was in the, the consent agenda. This was a request by Dave Fishman uh and petitioners to do some work on. That skirt that comes down off of um. Um the twenty seven, or the. The Spine Street Bridge onto West Central Street. You know, you get down and it's like, it's like a washboard. Um it's kind of bumpy and, and the, the turn is kind of funky and. You know, the, that whole intersection is, is, has always been, been issued for large trucks and things like that. So I, I think that's what, what, some of what is, uh what, what David was looking for here. Uh and it just so happened that that was on the road improvement plan. Um that was going to be suggested, so what David was going to request under here. Is actually going to be done. The town's doing it. Um because we know, we now own that road, uh the state turned it over to us. So uh you'll see that improvement under the capital improvements. Under the roadwork. Okay, so that'd be part of the program. This is a repeat, Cat Moynihan?
And she's actually asked for some time next week to, is it next week?
She did, she did a, a, a really nice job and has done a better job even providing more data. Um and I would say that uh, um it would be really important to, to take a look at it. This, this is not something that might be a turnkey thing, uh and, and I certainly understand that. Nothing in human relations, that in my, in my experience, was ever a turnkey. Um there was always something that needed to be examined carefully. Um but uh this is something that, you know, the towns, you know, town, town city in earnest, that they would. Take a look at, the administration, um and Cat does a great job explaining it, so. Um I'm sure she'll fill you in appropriately, but this is, at this time, it is being suggested to be referred. Back to the sponsor. Twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. The proponent. Uh requested no action. Those three articles uh were pertaining to uh the Pond Road. Uh project. Uh that was what I, I called up on the hill. Um how they were gonna shoot, uh you know. Was a shoe worn in, uh that, that plan that they had was beyond me, but. I'm not a builder, uh and that, that was, to me, it was one of the wackiest places to put it. In a residential area, but. Since it's not coming before a town meeting, I guess I can opine, huh? Um and I remember riding uh my mini bike up in that area when I was a kid. Uh cause I, I lived in Wellesley, not too far from there, so um. Uh that, that area is all wooded, a beautiful piece of, it's a property.
I used to run on that road when I was in college. And I wanna say I used to run on Pond Road, it's gorgeous, but not a, not a place for a lot of traffic.
We'll tell you what we did when I was in high school on that road.
No, please, Frank, no.
It was not paved very well, and we, we used to drive way too fast. But we survived it. And we was, a lot of us, we used to go through there all the time. Um. Okay.
Party spot, actually, when I would run.
That would do, eh? So that, that's the spring town meeting. Um if. You wanna do the uh special?
If you have a couple of minutes, I am mindful that we are at ten-thirty now, but.
I, I am too. I've been looking at the time. Um yeah. The thing about the special is. I don't think it follows it, does it? Special is two, special is two articles.
This is just a pro forma.
I think I think it's real simple to explain what Article One. Article One is to hear another report. They want to tell the C B R C wants to tell you what they've done, um, and what they're proposing. And that's different from what was done last fall. I think that's that's a key thing to keep in mind. Um, and number two, if they are to continue or motion B. If they are to continue in the manner which they're operating now, uh, they will need more funds. Or they're requesting more funds. So the motion A, motion, Article One has two motions, sorry, A and B, no, sorry, A and B. Um, and the s- the second amount um is seventy-five thousand dollars for legal fees. You'll see the discussion by the um. Finance Committee below, um. I won't say anymore.
One, uh, Frank, just procedurally, if that one's to hear a report, it. It reminds me that I don't really want to go there on the whole uh South Natick Dam thing, but. I remember being confused about articles that say to hear a report. Do you vote and then hear a report, or do you get it on the table, hear the report and then vote whether to accept it? It just seemed to.
Compared to the way we usually do things, it's done backwards. Yes, we vote to hear the report. Um, so you vote, a motion hits the floor, um, you either argue whether you want to hear it or not. We never argued, we never debated, uh, rarely debated, and then you voted and then you hear the report. Actually, what you're doing is you're authorizing someone to give a report.
Actually, it's a little more subtle than that. I think we've cleaned it up in recent years. Where uh here a report means you can't ask questions, so sometimes the motion is phrased, we'll hear the report. Sometimes the motion is phrased, hear and discuss the report, which is very, very different, because discussion could last a. A long time, although you you usually make sure that it doesn't last too long.
Well, when I hear it, when I hear things starting to get repetitive. Yeah, that's when I usually start chiming in and say, well, do we have something new or, you know, is there, no, are we done yet? I've used that, used that line a couple of times. Um, you're right, uh, uh, Martin. Uh, we've we've refined the motion so that it's either here or here and discussed, yeah.
Although in this particular case, there's no reason to discuss because there are specific motions that are on the table in the next article.
Is that all the discussion really happens on Article Two? So. I I'm looking at Article Two this way. Much of what you're is being proposed here wasn't one way or another proposed in the fall. But. A number of folks have chimed in, went to the. The Charter and Bylaw Review Committee meetings, the Charter and Bylaw Review uh folks. Had heard what Town Meeting said and took into account what the Select Board, uh, was some of the stakeholders. Um, what what everybody at Town Meeting has said, and they said, okay, these, we have now refined our vision. Um, or our thinking, and this is what we're going to recommend. So. You can read the motion, the article if you want, but I always find it, I always read these things backwards. Um, I read the motions first, then go back and look at the article to make certain that the the motion fits the article. So I jump to Article, uh, Motion One, if you could do that. I've already read the article. I I do recommend you read the article, so it'll play into if there's any. Arguments by me that you're you're talking out of scope. The first motion is um the key key motion. Um, that is on the table. Uh, that will allow any of the changes that are made. This spring at this special town meeting to modify what was done at the fall annual town meeting. Under Article Two. Okay?
Okay.
So that's all this is really doing. So the go-to motion. The first motion is that, and you go to the second motion, they notice how they numbered them in in numbers, not in letters. So that one does not re- really re- refer to the letter previous, the previous letter. Um, then this article, again, it has the opening paragraph, but the key is. What is the subject matter, the final text of what's gonna happen here? And what happens here in this one is to request for a deputy moderator. And you guys decide what you want to do with that. Um, I can I can only say from from being moderator. It really is nice to have somebody at your side that could step in. Um, if need be, and someone also uh that's privy uh to the conversations that are. Pre-seed town meeting. I can't tell you the hours that Diane and and I and Honorina. Uh, and I and Judy and and I take or talk. Um, to get ourselves into town meeting. If something ever happened to me, all that is is primarily lost. And I've had a heart attack once, uh, anybody could have an accident um and miss town meeting. It it's nice to have somebody as a second to step in into that role. That's all I'm gonna say about deputy moderator. How you, how it gets appointed, how it gets elected, that's up to you, folks. Quite frankly, you decide. Um, and the town, the C B R C is making um recommendations here. There is a new limitation that if you scroll down just a hair. That last sentence. Is is the culmination of some of the comments that were made during town meeting and. What was brought to uh the C B R C during the meetings. Um, and that was a concern that some people had. Um, that the deputy moderator um shall have the appointment power, but in ca- in actuality, no. But does not, it does not include the deputy moderator.
So if the moderator is unable to serve. Is the deputy moderator elevated to the moderator and then acquires those powers?
No, okay. Yeah, that's that's the point, is that no, that it's just. Well, if in fact there's a vacancy, there's another rules or failure to elect. The the vacancy can be filled by the by the select board. Um, or a special election can be called to fill to fill the vacancy. That's something different than. Um, let's say unable to serve or needing to re- refuge yourself, which has happened a couple of times. There's a few times it was a, an article with property that was behind my house and where we used to live in North Natick. Um, and I had to step back and step back. Or the hybrid town meeting, I I sponsored that and I felt uncomfortable. Also standing at the podium, um, you know, proceeding, you're going through that procedure, so Diane stepped in and. And stepped in the role of moderator, but we can't do, we can't do that now. Uh, because of the changes we've made. So that's what that's what Motion Two is about. Want to go on to three? You down, go down just a little bit. This is about removal and suspension of the town manager. Uh, this has, this had some some, a lot of input from the Select Board. Uh, and um. I think the Select Board voted um. In favor of this, it was one that the Select Board, if if you go to their recommendations. It was three, two, zero, it may not have been this one, but there was one that they had a three, two, zero recommendation. Um, but check it, the this was uh debated, we don't have any from the Select Board here. Uh, ask your Select Board friends. All about this motion, because this this one may still have some discussion at town meeting. But this is about the removal and suspension suspension of the town manager. Next, uh, Martin. Yeah, you're good, speedy. Uh, the next one is the powers and duties section. Um, if you can go down just a hair, please. I like to look at the final text.
Yeah.
A lot of the changes were um. The bullets, if you see the one, two, three, there's about eight of them there. It used to say he shall supervise, well, they took the hishio. Um, to make it gender neutral. Um, they also made a couple minor changes. There was one um major change that they made, and I, if you could go down just a little bit. Um, to the bottom. I want to make certain they did take it out.
A lot more than eight bullets.
Yeah. Yeah, they did, they took some, if if you look at compared this to what they had last fall. There's a section that they've taken out of it, um, and I don't remember exactly what it is, but you can do the the document compares. Um, and you'll see that there has been a change. Um, in that regard. Want to go to the next one? I wanna. I almost spent too much, I just want to highlight these. Yeah, there's a lot of.
Yeah, it's hard to tell where one starts and where it begins. Motion four, okay.
This is just a red line of it. Keep going.
Really hard to tell when we're starting something new here. Looks like we're in the next section.
All right, it is fine. Yeah, there was a suggestion that was made about organizing town agencies. And one was um pretty, I call it the emperor or empirical. Um, type of type of requirement, um. I guess the Select Board didn't like that either. That uh the town manager could could basically do it solely on. His or her um own initiative, uh, this is what exists now with some change, with some changes. Um, and the Select Board had, was it like the, the C B R C has receded back to. Um, the older version or or taking what exists now in the charter and making some modifications to it. Uh, this is only when we when we change or reorganize the town departments. Like when we reorganized the uh Facilities Department or um the Human Services. And we combined all those services, um, it has to go before town meeting. By either by bylaw or it can be done by administrative code now. Next. What's this? Oh, um, the these are what what's called, this next one is is called Transitional Provision. And we're taking Controller, Assistant Controller, Treasurer Collector. Uh, Treasurer Collector and Assistant Treasurer Collector and Town Clerk, and we're taking that out of our charter. And we're going to actually move it into our bylaws. I guess you can look at it for two reasons. One, um, we don't need them in there because some of it. Is actually set by by statute, and all we were doing was mimicking what what was in the statute. And two, if we want to make a change, we can do it easier if it's a bylaw. Than is if it's a in the charter, but. You can't take it out of the charter and then have nothing. So this sets up so that um until such time that um. A bylaw is enacted, these provisions stay in the charter, but once the bylaw is enacted. They get wiped out, they get swiped out. Um, the charter, the nineteen eighty charter had a very similar posi- provision in it. Um, when we were changing from things like uh the Public Works uh Commission. Which we don't have anymore, uh, and there used to be a Sewer and Water Commission. We had all kinds of little, I call them thieftums, um, and little political bodies. Those those were wiped out with our charter. And the Select Board um took over the the roads, the sewer water and public works as as commissioners. Um, that was the big change, and we also changed our Wreckin' Park to be, they used to be separate. Um, different departments or committees, then then they were combined as one. And made the made it half elected and half appointed and um. That was part of the old transitional provisions too, but until we wrote the bylaws, they s- the provisions stayed in the charter. That's all this does. It's all red line. Voting powers of the Select Board, read this, that's what that's what it's about. Remember, there might have, there was discussion over appointing. The the key is the appointing the town administrator for a three-year is a majority vote. If they want to have a five-year contract, it must be a two-thirds vote. That that's a cha- that's a change, you might remember that discussion.
I've got four more.
I know, I'm trying to, this this is a blanket, every uh number and gender. Is singular is plural and every gender is noted. One, one, it's all white, they're all wiped out. Um. Oh, this is the notice of vacancies. The practice I follow is this, is that when I know there's gonna be a vacancy in the Finance Committee, I then post it. And I wait, I wait fourteen days, and then I will interview for it. And then I will then fill it all within ninety days of its vacancy. That has not always been the case, um, that the Select Board. And you notice how it says, or other appointing authorities, um, such as me, the with the Finance Committee. And the School Committee with other committees, that there was never a firm process to do that. And some people would say, well, where's the posting or how did I know that the vacancy existed? Well, now it it has to be done in ten days. It has to then um. Be uh uh posted in ten days, then you have to enact it and get it done, you know, within a reasonable period of time. So that's all this is about, is it's caught up by that process. Well, this was a great uh discussion about the powers of the Select Board. And the executive powers and and then the. Powers therefore, as they were defined, and whether they were a town agency or not, I'm gonna let. The Select Board and the C B R C explain that, I'm not gonna get into it, because. Well, never mind, I'm not gonna say what I was gonna say. You know, sometimes we get into things so deeply that we can't get it, see our way out of it. Um, and I've been there. I've been there too, um. Go down just a hair.
You wanna go to the front page?
Right there. Oh, oh, okay, the big thing here, I think, was a performance review. Is that the language changed under under the performance review? And there was an objection by the Select Board, um, where. I'm paraphrasing it, so don't go only to this. Um, there was, it was almost like you're telling us how to, how we're doing it, and. No, you're not gonna tell us how how to do the job performance of the town administrator, that's our job. We'll figure, we'll we'll figure out the process and we'll we'll put that together, and and I think. We'll fig- we'll, we'll figure out the process and we'll, we'll put that together and, and I think. The CBRC backed off on their, their, let's say, very descriptive hard line position. I shouldn't have said that, but it was. Yeah. The red line helps, helps you to see exactly the words that were changed. Uh, this is an interesting one and um we actually tried this the last. CBRC, but they got so tied up in, in debating it, they didn't know what was gonna do. We have, have requirements under the statute to publicize. Um, things, notices in the, the local newspaper. Or as what we used to do in, in the cable business, the newspaper of greatest circulation. In a community, yeah, good luck. Sometimes, in some communities, it didn't even exist. So um this actually gives uh the select board. The ability to define what local newspaper or gen- posting of general. Um, activities in the town, whether it would include. Um, websites, signage, social media and or any com- combination thereof. Of the available venues to post things and the select board are required to hold a hearing. So that we, those interested part, people in town could go when they hold the hearing and. And say, well, we, we think that it should be the website, it should be, um, and I'm just picking this, social media. And the newspaper and it shouldn't be, um, you know, one third le- more or less. Um, coverage by virtue of all three, that's the best way to notice it. Or maybe five years from now, the select board and, and the public may decide, no, maybe it's, it's, it's just the website. That would satisfy because now a hundred percent of us are all, all in tune to the website. Um, having a posting and having some. Way to define it uh was the big argument, the town meeting you might remember, or at least debate. And this actually leaves a process so that it can change from time to time. Um, and the board is like, the, the, excuse me, the select board. Is the entity that would hold the hearing that then would determine what the best way to do public notices is. And I made it under a law like Clark.
Wow.
There you go, right, yeah. Thank you, Frank, for this special marathon session.
That was a marathon.
Speaking of which, would you hazard a guess, or maybe you don't wanna go on public record, uh guessing? How many nights will the meetings take?
Did I say at least four?
Yeah, I like that answer, yeah.
That, that is the question we've all been waiting for.
I'm gonna tell you something that, that I actually said in another meeting, so it is public knowledge. It can't go more than ten. As far as I'm concerned, and I'll tell you why, Shalene and I have scheduled a trip.
Ah.
Um, that we leave for Memphis and then go down to Mississippi uh for twelve days. And this is our fiftieth anniversary prize to ourselves. And it starts on the twenty eighth of, of May. So we gotta be done by then, or you're gonna have to appoint another moderator. I'm not in town, so I, I'm hoping it's gonna be in six or eight.
That will be the, the town's anniversary present to you, wow.
It's, it's, it's a pleading. The curse of schedules, so I, I am, thank you, I, I am, uh. I'm hoping that it's six or eight nights, uh, it really depends on how much debate. Certainly the CBRC mo- articles as well as the zoning, the zoning is pretty critical stuff. And if, if town meeting wants to act on it, um, and takes it. Yeah, I, I would expect that there will be a lot of, or should be a lot of questions.
Can I ask a, a follow up on the uh CBRC, the charter and bylaws, that was a real nightmare last time. It really bogged us down, three sessions and we, we only got halfway through it. Uh, i- is it organized in a better way this time, do you think, that it's, we can actually get through this?
Do you think it was because of the organization or do you think it was, was because um there was conflicting opinions? Let me answer, let me answer that with a question.
It's, it's the opinions, the fact that it was so complicated and a lot of it wasn't presented to people until. Too late in the process, I don't, I think the whole thing, the whole proposal wasn't actually in the original FinCon report. And people were complaining they didn't have a justice.
That was what I was gonna say, I think we're better prepared now.
Yeah.
Than we were in the fall, that's, that's number one. I also think that the CBRC, um, the select board. And um the five or six principal um debaters um at town meeting, um. I call them the fam six. Uh, those people that have valid, valid, you know, debating positions, um. Call it, got together enough so that they could share their thoughts and opinions. And now this, there is output from that. That's refined and that's better, better organized, I think, than what was presented before. Um, I'm not going to uh, um, take the suggestion of the consolidated motion. Like it was done, um, that. If there were no objections, that would have worked fine, but where there are objections, it doesn't work right. So we're gonna take this one at a time. And we're gonna, we're gonna look at each one of these changes, it's gonna be lethargic. It's gonna take time, but at least we know it'll be done. Um, better, I think, doing it that way. Uh, I can only take what, what town meeting suggests to me with process, I don't like to do what other moderators do. And basically say, we're gonna do it this way and you're gonna like it. Um, although I, I can set the agenda, I can ta- say when things are gonna come up in town meetings. Um, I, 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 I don't think Natick's moderator has ever done that. I think the moderators have always left it up to town meeting to, to kind of figure out the, the schedule and the timing. Um, and it, it's a downside to that because they, town meeting can go off the rails. And, you know, kind of go off and in, in another direction, as it so- does sometimes. But it's done a few times and I've been, I've been, you know, the, the devil in that process too, when I was on the floor, but eh. Um, we could, we could all regulate ourselves better. And I think that is the more important thing too. Is that um if we have differing opinions, we voice them, we, we, we communicate them. Uh, we share them with the people that are, are posing views um in advance of town meeting. Um, and we have, I think we'll have a better output, better end product that way. And I think we're better prepared to do that. That answer your question?
Oh, yeah.
I got my opinion out there too.
Sincerely hope all of that comes to.
I do too, I do too.
Yeah, all of those materials prepared in advance are just, I think what you ought to do, Frank, is ask, when you get to the zoning articles at least. If uh anybody's, uh, you know, gets permission to speak, ask them if they've viewed the videos. And if they haven't, limit debate to thirty seconds.
You know, there, there was an interesting motion that I was asked about. I shouldn't share this with you, someone said to me, well, once we go a half an hour or, or after. After we get through about ten speakers, why don't we just put a motion on the floor to limit debate to a minute? Thereafter, and you know, I thought about it, I said, yeah. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
But, but then, you know, what if someone? Does have a good idea, wasn't called on by me in the first ten, ten speakers. Does have five minutes and. Ten people before that person, or maybe six, had the opportunity to, to, you know. Speak freely for five minutes and then this person is really, you know, just basically hamstrung, can't speak. I, I don't like the fact that, that we would limit it, if we wanna say that right up front. That we're gonna have ten speakers, after those ten speakers, each speaker only has a minute. If you say that in the beginning and you set the ground rules in the beginning, I've got no problem with that. But if you do that midstream, I don't think that's fair, at least everybody has the expectation of what's happening. Or what, what the rules are. Um, so you can, you can take that, one time Josh Ostrop made a motion and I thought it was great. That he uh limited debate to two minutes. And town meeting agreed to it. It was on some kind of, was it real estate or something? It was, it was, it was a zoning, it was, it had something to do with real estate or property or zoning.
Yeah.
And uh Josh, you know, asked me ahead of time.
Actually, that one I think I objected to, I think. Not that the principle's not good, but I think that might have been an article where I knew that Julian Munich had a particular point of view.
Yes.
Which I didn't agree with, but it definitely is something that it would take five minutes for him to explain, I thought he had the right to do that. So I thought he was being cut off unfairly. Even though I didn't agree, I'd, I'd heard him at the FinCon and I think at the spending board as well, even though I didn't agree with his own point, I thought he had the right to say it, so. In that case, I didn't, I didn't like Josh's motion for that particular instance.
I think in, in the right place at the right time, a motion like that is, is appropriate.
Yeah.
To limit speech to a certain time.
Yeah.
The other, the other trick that some of the moderators suggested, because I threw this question out. Just say, hey, we're, we're gonna debate this for an hour. Use your time wisely, you all have five minutes, but is either gonna be twelve speakers? Or more, and that's it, we're only gonna debate this for an hour.
Yeah.
So use your time wisely.
There's few things that, that really.
Yeah.
Deserve more than an hour.
A fellow from, um, where was he from? I forget where he is, I was Plymouth, he uses that tactic. Uh, where he basically goes, okay, this, this, this matter is up for an hour, that's it. Maybe he has a little more power and authority. But thank you very much for listening, I, I rambled on a little bit a couple times and my computer did finally solve itself. I guess I'm gonna have to have it checked out.
Yeah. Thanks again for your time, Frank, it's always, uh. Uptown meeting season to get, get your brief on everything, so.
Any event, yeah, thank, well, good luck to us all. We all, we all have a, have a stake in this, um. But we, you know, we do a lot of good work at town meeting, we really, really do, for all, for all our faults. For all of the bumps in the road, um, we, we do really well in Natick, um. And we, we're getting better, I think we're getting better too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, good, alright, well, um, yeah, that's it for this morning, next, next week, we can. Just discuss internally and lobby for and against or around the side of any of the articles and motions, uh. Yeah, and then we'll be into May, so, cool.
I, I do think if we get through that many, that, that half of the ones that would wanna be talked about are already gone.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, right.